We have at the annual shelter, I know that I was present for Boy Scout that built one at one of our, I think it was Allen Park, I believe. So we have ten of them. And we additionally had, I think in 2010, adopted two code provisions specifically dealing with stormwater runoff. So it is something that we're mindful of, but there's always room for improvement, especially when something is important. So please, if you can get the grant information to my office, we have a wonderful, wonderful grant writer and he would love to take advantage of it.
Okay, I will give that information for you.
What do you mean, do you need to remember?
Yes. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you. I have just speakers from Constance Goodman, so, Constance, you love this, oh, okay. Sorry about that. I didn't know, have you always identified, no, 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 I know that, you always identify yourself by your name? And I'm going to see him, no, I know your name. I should say, I never associated the name Goodman in front of him, but I should, anyway, what do you got?
This morning, as I was coming to the meeting, I passed eleven West Bay Road. And they were in the process of cutting down three major trees, three to five foot in diameter.
Who's coming down?
I don't know the name of the company, but I went and spoke to the owner of the property. He told me that that's what he was, he has a permit and he was allowed to do that. And with nothing I could do about it. I spoke to someone else here in the audience and they said to me that because it was neighborhood business, it was permitted. I don't believe that a tree three to five feet in diameter, that's obviously hundreds of years old, should be just cut down to someone's benefit. And that, I don't know how that works in your town. Who gave permission? The permit has an initial, but it doesn't have a name on it, so I don't know who signed it. But they do have a permit and it's initialed, that's one thing. The second thing I'd like to hear enough is, when are we having a new commissioner of development and planning named? I think it's important for the town to keep to the codes that they're supposed to be doing. And without that person in charge, I don't see how you can continue to do what's necessary in rights of the community. Do you have an answer to that?
Yeah, I think, I'm still doing the first one. And just like you know, the three permanent species that are in the forest market, right, in the original?
Yes, sir. Take a bite, miss Hope. I was hoping earlier, I investigated, it is a valid, three permanent, a commercial. He's surprised that being developed and throughout, so I'm, we're gonna have that expected by our inspector. Okay, here's the question for you, if you can hang down, go to the now.
So you disagree with this?
Even though we're, we're in court on this same property and nothing has been finalized.
How do you know it's the same property?
It is the same property. And why don't they get anything else should have taken place on that property until the final results of the court case is decided?
All right. As far as the second question is concerned regarding the vacancy in Commissioner's Department of Land Development, I have to say, I see Tim Zeit here, I do not see Dieta and Councilman, Coggy Yado, that's the In the interim, Deputy Commissioner Zeit,
I know.
Deputy Commissioner Akriat have been doing a very, very good job, excellent job. Councilman Taffin Go is now the liaison from the town to the department, so I can get the development. And so far, we're doing fine. And we're staying at the course until we see the need to appoint a commissioner. Ultimately, you will have it, obviously, but
We don't see the need.
I guess. You have a lot of, you have a lot of.
One or more, sorry.
I'd say the department is running very, very well. I don't see a immediate need at the moment to appoint a commissioner tomorrow morning, or even next week. We're assessing the field, Councilman Coggy Yado brought back to us, as to the doings of the department, any observations or recommendations he might have to this point. And ultimately, there will be a commissioner. There is no urgency out there.
I agree with you.
Wait, is she up to speak?
No, it's about code enforcement, and they told me they wouldn't come. That is the problem.
I missed the question.
That is about the trees. My daughter called code enforcement this morning and they would not come and see what was going on with the trees.
I don't know if that is code enforcement, that is code enforcement. Are you having, do you have your own inspector?
Yes, it has been inspected, there's a violation, now inspected, what not to call code enforcement? Of course, you need a violation, it's not one of those, I mean, I had all the proof, it's just on the litigation.
Code enforcement over plenty of trouble, that.
Either one, public safety or code enforcement.
Where to research stuff, where to research, where are you?
Morning. Good morning. Something came in from Jamaica, Queens, which I have passion about this one.
Ah, I would think Jamaica.
I don't know, I'm trying to, my turn. I wanted to present this to the board. It's a postment from the city of New York. It's a call today that I wanted to limit the use of gas-powered leaf blowers to seasonal. She refers to some of the work it. It's copies. Excellent, you want some?
Sure.
Careful. I gotta look. Good morning, just to take a look at this, and I think it's an excellent idea. In my neighborhood, we're just bombarded with leaf blowers. It's, you know. I work all week, I work hard all week, on Saturdays, I want to be able to use my backyard. And I have to run into the house and hide from leaf blowers all day. It's kind of ridiculous. There's a, this is kind of, there are other towns in Long Island, but this is being presented, one of them is Richampton. And a man named Steve Jones was part of saying landscaped, since they're now residential areas into industrial zones. And they couldn't agree more, I walk out of my backyard and I'm also be living in an industrial building. We really have the limits. Now, the landscapers were claiming that they, the cost, I ran the numbers, even if these were very expensive items to replace with replace with lithium bad electric, which are very quiet, relatively speaking, except for that, I guess not. It would cost a dollar a week extra for each customer. And that, you know, that's a real conservative number, probably a lot. And I'd just like to show you how I ran the numbers, but they're good numbers. I'm an engineer. That's another, now they're saying that they need the power. They don't need 200 miles an hour blowing out of a leaf blower, blow blades of grass off the sidewalk or a dry grade or a water grade. There may be leaf season, maybe, but not during summer, you don't need. Again, I'm an engineer, I've got a master's degree, I know what I'm talking about as far as how they use these leaf blowers. The lithium batteries, leaf blowers would be perfectly fine, but it's like dealing with the NRA, you know, they don't want to they don't want to give up their leaf blowers. They have pride in my dead cold hands.
Would time limits, just in your opinion, you know, because I hate the idea of just banning something outright, I just, you know, I think it's an extreme measure of that. But would time limits or something like that?
They have time limits now. And a lifetime to get ignored, I mean, I'm the form of the public safety or the time. I think the councilman, he could like make that.
I think the councilman, the councilwoman is asking, we have phaserates, radiation's well aware of that, but I think what she's asking is can we adjust? You know, I don't understand.
Well, right now, time limits are eight in the morning on a weekday, eight in the morning to seven at night. The amount is like that.
Is that the end time, seven o'clock?
Yeah, that's a weekday, that time on a Saturday is, time on Saturdays is nine a.m. to 5 p.m.
Nine to five.
Which, okay.
So is it that, it's not me, I'm sorry.
She's big there.
I had a call from, is it that the enforcement, is it happening fast enough, like you call them, we're not getting?
No, all I'm saying is really good, they're really good. The thing is, you know, it's a tool that's not needed, you can do without it for those months, June, just like Yannis is doing, from June to the end of September. They don't need it.
I was, yeah, I was gonna ask you, from June first until September 30th. I don't, I assume leaf blowers, I don't talk about every single leaf blower in the world, but generally speaking, what would be the use for leaf blowers during June, July, August, and September, there's a general cleanup?
That's an excellent question, the next time there's a leaf, there's a landscape beginning, watch them. Watch what they're blowing around. You know, once you hit June, there's not that many, only leaves are falling down, and trees are stressed out, and
Are they using, are they using like grass, lippings and?
Yeah, they're still, it's still bad, it makes a lot of sense. And when I think they have leaf blowers, they can still use the electric. We're just saying gas-powered leaf blowers that make, they go over 100 decents, I mean, I turned my car, the drive to where I heard one in my backyard. And it was literally, I think it's four blocks away. And I could hear it, I walk out of my yard every day, there's a buzzing sound going on, even if they're not in my neighborhood. And my neighborhood, yeah, every neighborhood in Sibley, my neighborhood, I kind of, I'm overfront. And, you know, you don't have probably a lot of good complaints, every Friday has a landscape. I took my own mow, one of the, probably, check some of the people in my neighborhood do their own mow the rest of the time.
We, there must have been a pretty significant number of complaints about this. And we went to, the landscapers are actually united, they have an organization where you can go to. You know, give work to pretty much, well, certainly the majority of them, anyway. I'll go back to Jimmy, who's the executive fellow of Ezgo, who has been related, he's always been responsive when we fall off. I don't know, you know, where we're going with this, but I would reach out to him and talk him about, to see what his response is. And we always certainly want to hear from the other side as well, we want to prepare about this. And we'll go back, we visited our board members, drawing out from what the councilwoman said. And let's, give us an opportunity, I know you can focus on it, we have to, they obviously, but they're directing us to it. So let us, let us take a look over the next couple of weeks, and then, when is the next meeting? If you could, I tell you what, Stephen, what, why did you do this, why did you, on other layout, why didn't you just say hello to Stephen Marks and just write that? And this is my fellow. And just, you just opened up the lines of communication, so we can report back to you over the next couple of weeks.
Okay, I just wanted to say, well, okay, so, yeah, the argument for landscapers will be cost power and the dirt thing, because they, they it's going to cost them extra time if they don't have these machines, which is not true. But, so basically, about their time, what about my time? That means my time has no value, my time in my backyard on a Saturday has no value. So, well, that's just the cap for their arguments. I'd like to very much your time.
Should they bring their, their, uh? Their living, right?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah. We talked about the trees, we talked about code enforcement this morning, and they would not come out until we got to have any responsibility. And then they go to highway, and highways, even though they have the permits, I didn't know that at the time, I was looking out for them. I, and I just don't want to also be the bad guy. So, but they would not send anybody out, which I thought was totally unfair. And
You definitely not sending anyone out?
Yes, because they should have come out and checked and made sure that they had the permits, and said to me, hey, this is a new one.
Well, I don't know what that, didn't that, I don't
It did not happen, they told me.
All right, then, I don't want to date with you, but
No, no, I have to say, they told me they don't send people out, that's their job.
Okay. But they did, so you understand, they did have permits?
I do, I understand that now, but it's a question, I missed 12 o'clock or whatever. Point is, the other, the other problem I'm having is, we've been talking about my street, and I'm looking for someone to tell me what happened to the $1 million bond, when those houses were being put up to designate the street. Because the street is a bitch, I just spent $11,000 and put tires on the back of my car. And I don't think that's fair. So we need to do something about the street. We were too busy about that, we were going to resign up, because people come and turn around and call us that all the time, it's actually happening. So I would really appreciate if someone would use this.
Yeah, look into what became of the bond?
Bond, so we can get the street designated, so that we can get the street fixed.
Okay. We will, I know it's going to be cancer, but
No, I understand.
I think the town attorney's office, that I have.
I'd like to look at.
Please, you have, you have a street, you have the name of the street?
Very, very good.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And, because the other neighbors are getting ready, so they say, I'm on the second, the other neighbors are getting ready to do something about it with some kind of legal action. We need to have our garbage and our, no, that's what we're getting, and the street is a really big issue.
Okay, I think it's a very good question. All right, we'll talk to you back by later.
Thank you.
Okay. It looks like Carla Smith.
Good afternoon, Mr. Lee. I've been a resident of Massapequa for 21 years.
Do you do it?
I have now, I've lived in Massapequa, I live on the Clox Boulevard, I lived in Nassau Shores for Chen, I've lived in this suburb, which is quite a while now. And in the end of the primaries, and my right to vote, my right to have my mail, my FEMA and flood issues and my insurance issues will come in one day to me. First of all, I want to thank the town for everything I did for me during Hurricane Sandy, my house is devastated. It took us two and a half years to get back, I'm back now, but I still have the same issues. We put, we got our $250,000 from our insurance company, we have to put the rest of our savings to build our home. And I still have the same issues I had 14 years ago. I can't vote, or I'm supposed to vote, because I have an address that's existed for 93 years. When I go to vote, I'm made to go to three or four different places. Today
I'm sorry, I don't want to make you go through this, I'm not understanding that.
There's two same addresses in Massapequa for my home.
Two, same, exact same?
Same exact address.
Not at East West?
Well, at East, finally, but it's not recognized. So today, when I go to vote, like I've had for the last 14 years, I'll have to go to three or four different places. Eventually, just put a
Find your name in there.
A paper ballot, so that's another thing. My mail, 50/50 shot that I get it. During Hurricane Sandy, I was waiting for the DEP to give me my permit to do my bulkhead. It went to the other bayou, the other people were on vacation, my mail must have dropped behind somewhere in their home. I didn't get that done, I still don't have my bulkhead done. I got a letter from FEMA yesterday that there's fraud occurring with my home, that I'm double dipping. Either am I a tenant, or am I an owner? Because I collected $250,000 twice. I don't know how that was, because my house looked spectacular to them. Voting today is going to be an issue. I had a friend stay over my house when my mother-in-law was passing away in Texas. My girlfriend had cancer, at the time she went back into, out of remission, she called 911. It took them 45 minutes to come to someone that was dying in my home. The town had helped me immensely any time I called them, but the issue was still not solved. I can't vote, I don't get my mail, I'm getting, I have letters from FEMA that now I have to spend hours on the phone trying to figure this all out. If you Google me, you won't find me. If you, you know, and plus the fact that I've also put in a handful of property in Hurricane Sandy, I don't know how, because I'm having issues with the neighbors. So it's still a nightmare for me. But my voting rights, my mail, my insurance, I find this to be a problem. With everything else that's happening in my neighborhood, I think this is pretty bad. When my girlfriend passed away, by the way, she did pass away that evening. And I do have, I don't even know if I call 911, where it goes. I know my neighbor's house, seven or eight years ago went on fire, my husband's a ex-New York City fighter, he put the whole house out on fire because it took them 30 minutes to come to save someone's home. So I have issues with this. My rights, you know, it's like, what did I say on the lunch thing, no taxation without representation? I'm not being represented in mailing, in voting, in insurance. What do I do? I'm told to many people.
And what do you do, is a good question. Carl, I don't mean to sound, I want to answer your question, but where does the town, where do you, where does the town enter into concern, do they involve those?
Oh, yeah, they've been very helpful in the sense they changed my street to east. If I go to the post office, if my regular mailman is out on vacation, or he gets sick, the 50/50 shot, I get my mail. It's a funny thing, somebody sent me oranges from Florida, I have a sister who lives in Florida, and it's these special oranges that I get. I saw Amazon and I ran to the other bayou and I said, you have my oranges? They said, no, no, we don't, it went to another bayou and they ate them. It's, it's, even roses, if I get roses on my birthday, I'm in January, I don't get my flowers. So if I know that I'm getting something on Amazon and it says it's being delivered, I run to other addresses. That's how I found my permit to build my bulkhead. They found it behind their radiator. I called them last night, we call it the other bayou, I was crying on the phone. Because after I leave here, since I've been here all morning to talk about my plight, I will now have to go home and speak to FEMA for at least two hours. And then, after that, I'm going to go vote, and I'm going to have to go to Fairfield, I'm going to have to go to Amityville, because I'm school district's Amityville, I'm in East Massapequa. So I have a lot of issues, but I pick taxes, you know where to find me during tax time, but I don't know what's going to happen to me now. I mean, my friend died, did it to me. I want to know, when I die at 911, why can't they come to my home?
Okay, I'm, wow, there really is, pretty awful.
And I've been talking about this for 14 years, but now I'm like crazy.
Who can deal with this?
Well, the town's been excellent, they had, actually
I'm trying to make it work, you want to?
Well, there was a nice lady by the name of Warren, she helped me, and then there was a town attorney that helped, and called Department of Highway, they sent letters to this and that.
Stephen, we need to, I need to talk to Carla, not necessarily directly involved, but we need to find out, what to break into the circuit here. I don't know, I don't know what else to do, I suppose. We have to, I do remember, you know, all the years, we have had trouble with duplicate addresses. It was simple, both in postal, as I mentioned, compared to
They told us it was a town problem, the town has tried to resolve it, but it's not being solved. Like I said, my husband putting out, you know, it's a 25-year retirement, and he put out an entire house on fire before the fire department came. I know that they're volunteers, they couldn't even believe it, we rescued their dogs. I mean, but this, what happens to my house? What if I get a break-in? Or my friend dying, you know, she died that evening, it was 45 minutes, she couldn't catch her breath, there was blood all over my house. I mean, this is, this is serious, and I've been dying to talk about it, but yesterday, when I heard about FEMA, and I know I have to vote today, I feel like going postal. No pun intended.
I think, Stephen, you need to chat with Carla, we need to find a place where we break into this freedom. We have had this in the past, we've been advocating, we've worked it out with the postal office, but seems to be a little war going on, a lot of chaos and confusion. So, by the way, whatever is a problem, tell us, it's a town's problem.
But we say that.
Well, people always do that, and you learn at the bottom of the longest quote in the world, and like that. But anyway, Mr. Marks, we'll just, we'll not, we'll just try to open up the lines of communication with you. And we'll, we'll try to unravel, so, just
They went to demolish, my house was demolished, they need to, they went to demolish the whole bayou. This is, it's like, it took me double time to build, I, I need this resolved yesterday.
Hopefully, they at least got the guy.
I'm getting too old for the drama, I want to be able
Oh, did the same house, the guy in Orange, it's a major
He didn't, he said somebody else, I don't know, they, they got your tenant, but now they're saying now I'm a tenant, why do you have a letter? They say I'm committing fraud.
Well, I understand how some of the stuff, like, you know, especially the oranges, but it's really not, it's really not a very
I mean, that's the funny story with the oranges, it's like hermits, it's everything.
Nightmare on Amityville, again. Start with Mr. Marks, introducing himself to each other. Any names you might remember to all of the years that you've worked within the town? Get as much as you can.
I have letters from your channel.
That'd be great, I'll ask them. Okay, keep with Mr. Marks. All right, all right, Stephen. Lisa, uh, Lisa. Yes, you, in fact, you know what, I didn't realize, breaking into, I don't mind if you walk in on your own speakers and enjoy your life. And that goes to the temple, the temple as well. Let me just say, let me just say what I have for you, hold on. We'll take some of Lisa, go back, we'll go back to, all right, I have Deborah, I have, and Lisa, and I'm Then I also have, Gourmee, Dashan Singh, DJ, Arneja, Arneja?
Yes.
And Jasper, Arneja. So, there's six speakers there, I guess, on the same topic, obviously, the temple. So I don't, you want to organize it in a special way, or?
Lisa, I'm on it.
Okay, all right, so what do we get from you, from Lisa, and then I'll move through the members of the temple, how's that? You can organize it, whatever, what you like.
We should, thanks.
All right, you're up.
Good morning, my name is Deborah Weisak, and I am one of the many representing the Morton Village Civic Association. Unfortunately, many of us could not attend this today, mainly due to occupational and work obligations. We are here today to convey a need for open communication and transparency. At present, we have been privy to only bits and pieces of information regarding the site plans of 1065 Old Country Road, 10 and 12 Hope Court, and 14 and 16 Cynthia Lane. As far back as October 7th, 2015, we, to a lawyer, had respectfully requested notification of any application or information filed with the town voice debate. And plans have been submitted since then, which we have not been notified of. We are very anxious and very apprehensive to trust the process or parties involved in this situation. We did foil these properties listed above. In these foiled documents, we observed numerous plans, some which included the total destruction of residential homes to pave way for parking lots. In addition, we could not find any variance applications or any kind of minutes from a variance hearing. This is pretty strange, I know we're only late people, but we have a significant increase in square footage, surface area, and a footprint of a new structure. A catering kitchen, soup kitchen to be installed. Approximate public assembly has stated on plans adding up all the floors of over 1,000 people. We don't see any variance, various soil grading, stormwater runoff changes. We have lighting structures that are being applied for. We have height and size parapets on the building that's being installed. And we have new entrances and egresses and exits from the structure. We don't see any variance applications on any of this. And most important, we don't see any variance applications for parking lot and space requirements. Additionally, upon examination of the foil we were given, we do not find one impact study. No environmental, no ecological, no stormwater runoff flooding study, no traffic flow study, no past traffic hazard study, no egress/ingress study, no parking lot space allotment study, and no air quality study. There is no community, environmental, or education, ecological impact study for this structure that's being done. And as we selected from by the documents in this foil, the aggressive purchase of these homes, 10 and 12 Hope Court and 14 and 16 Cynthia Lane, is possibly a deliberate and calculated process to which the owners of 1065 Old Country Road performed without any sensitivity or regard towards our community. I cannot explain how much anxiety this has produced in the community. And in a letter dated on July 21st, 2015, written by their own architect, Mr. Angelo Corva, to Mr. Ebelio, he states, "I am aware of the commitment that was made by board members of the temple to provide parking across the street, which is evident in the attached plan that was prepared and submitted reflecting that design." He goes on, "I expressed my disgust with their approach, their lack of attention to detail, and their ignoring of my advice in accordance with what has been outlined and discussed previously, submitted and reviewed." Another letter, August 20th.
I'm sorry, that letter was from?
Mr. Corva to Mr. Ebelio. Another letter from Mr. Corva to Mr. Ebelio on August 20th, 2015. "I purposely, I personally went before their board of the owners of 1065 Old Country Road to clearly indicate the cause of the problem and your confirmation that the parking across the street has previously presented by members of their own community had not been fulfilled." He continues, "I simply wanted to go on record to express the position I am in and the feelings that have been ensued by actions of other people, which I find very unfortunate." that have been ensued by actions of other people, which I find very unorthodox, unprofessional, and totally lacking in regard to the most important points of this entire application of 1065 Old Country Road and the previous agreements put forth." Another letter, November 2nd, from Mr. Corva to a ta, a board member of the temple. "Dear Mr. Chowla, the day I spoke with the commissioner, you were lustrous. Members took down fences, took down trees, and caused further issues with the town voice debate. You continue, you continue to do things the way you want as opposed to making peace with the people, and the results were exactly what presently have." And finally, on November 3rd, and Mr. Corva writes to Mr. Ebelio, "They continue to ignore me, come to my office, ask for my help, and then they do not follow up. I have never experienced the likes of anyone like this with their non-commitments regarding the parking across the street along with a long list of other items. We hope that starting now, moving forward, we can all work together to maintain and preserve our community, together with the town board's oversight, transparency of all information, and the goodwill of all people, come to a resolution that's fair and just and made with compassion for all." And I thank you very much.
Thank you, Deborah, thank you. I know you've been overseeing this. Yeah, that's right. I need, uh, I just wanted to get a report. I know you've been tugging at majority yet, and I know I haven't been exactly available to you at all times, but, um, the less we love this, we are hoping by your meeting shortly after our last gathering, if there are documents exchanged, if I go to whoever had outstanding foil requests, whatever the case was, um, I've just got a sense from tenor of statement I just heard that maybe things didn't work out quite as we were hoping?
Uh, yes, at this point.
Well, let's, let's take one, I'm not, I'm not trying to... Where are we at, as far from, from the town's perspective?
At the end of the day, um, my last conversation with Mr. Wysock and the homeowners of Hope Community on Sunday, uh, we had, sorry, yes, the Sunday, it was the Sunday, two, two Sundays ago, we had a discussion about some, I think, some, uh, request that were made by residents and brought that back to the community, uh, average time, uh, the scene communities in the temple, I got the, uh, how the response on some changes that ultimately could be made which potentially could, uh, correct the issue or make it so that it would be more valid. Jury declined, or, um, particularly generally, I did not get a chance to see, but Mr. Quinda, who was probably, I think, I got, like, one of the most affected, if not the most affected in houses, the one next to one, the Hope courthouse. He, I think, has a family issue, um, that has made it so that he not just, in actual opinion. The reason why he's important is that I'd like to get sort of insecure for some of the suggestions that were made. In the interim, I spoke to another member of Hope Court community, uh, Mr. Heisenfeld, and he is, seemed to give, tell me that maybe some of those changes were not enough, um, and that he would like additional, uh, I guess, additional things that were done. That was late on Friday. The order of the community to get a particular gate closed, so I choose out the community to help him. But I haven't had a chance to discuss whole fact with the scene community in order to find out what the residents are doing. In the interim, I had to reach out to the council in the last year, I'd like to sit in part, uh, and keep a scheduled meeting. So at that point, I'm a little bit off and, um, still, uh, told all the...
I'm going to, uh, I must say, exchange, I mean, the slower...
Yes, last day, they're on the, that Tuesday afternoon, a couple weeks ago, they took pictures and photocopies, whatever they needed. I know there was additional information that Jim was requesting they got as far as I'm aware. So as far as I know, everything is, everything is...
Deborah, is that so? Are there documents there?
Well, that's why I was talking, because particularly the documents, the question of the documents.
How so? You can, come on, make sure to back up. I know, I know when you said, "I didn't see this, I didn't see that," what you meant is they're absent. I get that. That doesn't mean anything.
There's an absence, but that doesn't mean the documents existed.
They're not there. Perhaps there are those such documents. What I'm saying is, are there documents that you believe the town has that you're entitled to have?
No, we're actually questioning the documents ourselves. We're questioning the fact that there's no, any type of ecological, environmental, or community study done with this structure.
I just want to ensure no...
And, and no variances.
No, I understand that. I just want to ensure, but my question is, you're not concerned that any documents are being withheld from you? A few of them.
That I don't know, Mr. Vindio. I don't know that.
So you're not aware, but...
At this time, I am not aware, but...
All right. Stephen, are, are there, are there any other components in the file that have not been turned up? Hasn't been, maybe, uh, let me get an answer from Stephen first of all.
Again, as far as I, as I know, everything that the requesting, that the physical brought showed how they did it to prove anything they continue to request about that.
Deputy, as far as you know, what's second, you're closer to yours. Deputy, any other documents that you're aware haven't been turned up?
All documents that were in my possession were given to Deborah.
Okay, I'm sorry, Deborah.
There is one stipulation in the foil that we asked for, we did, we did not receive. It was communications between anybody from 1065 Old Country Road or any of the houses to council people. And I was told at that point that I would have to contact each individual council person for that.
I think you just did a sort of what that...
I didn't, I didn't get it.
I'm not aware of it.
Just please look, because I, I'm gonna have to write all, you know?
No, no, I, I... Okay.
Thank you.
Stephen, anything to add?
At this point, no.
All right, but let me do this, let me go over. You said you had a speaker, who wanted to speak first? Why don't we have that speaker, we can now, yes? Yes? Oh, no, no, we're gonna go back, we're gonna try to go back.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you.
We have other speakers too, I got, I still have a Friar, a Grumold, and we're gonna, we're gonna get everybody.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Honorable Superior.
I'm sorry, you're next, sir.
My name is, I'm Jasper here, uh, Singh Abner.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Honorable Superior, John Maitos, and the members of the council of Hope Westro Bay. I'm standing here today in front of you to plead an ask for your duration of help and support to open our temple, which I see you are working on. I'm a resident of Plano since 1987. Me and my wife moved to city for a short spell. However, we came back to San Juan in Plano when we reboarded our house in 1997. We had two children, my son graduated from P O B J F K High School, finished his undergraduate, uh, he completed his thesis from NYIT, and he is finishing up his post-graduation from Austria in Business MBA. My daughter is graduating from P O B J F K this year, and I'm proud to say that he's going to Cornell in the fall. My wife is a graduate from NYU and works as oncology nurse with my sister and in New York Presbyterian Hospital. My sister, who is a prospective, a very talented hematologist and oncologist, also lives in Plano since 1977. My three nephews graduated from P O B J F K, and two of them are doctors and one is CFA. As you may, as you may tell, Plano is our home, and our rooms are now firmly planted in Hope of Westro Bay. I'm an engineer by trade, and I've been working for 28 years in aerospace company. I'm in, uh...
I'm sorry, from where?
In a aerospace company, a hobbyist, a broker. In my spare time, I coach girls in Samteen U18 team, soccer team for P O B Soccer Club. And we play the long-term junior soccer league. It happens to be that Sunday was our first game. I've been coaching soccer for P O B since intramural, and it's very gratifying to see our children growing and moving on to fulfill their aspirations. Hopefully, we will be able to foster positive influence on them through soccer and help our community create leaders to move for our great country. Or, or, it is a lot of fun and great experience. I have personally learned a lot from this experience. I've gone to many bar pits, water, aqua pits, swamps. I made a lot of friends and I played golf in the little beach bases. The large churches in Senegal are sitting down in Westro Bay and Plano. Most of them I think are in residential areas. It is my feeling, and this is just my feeling, is that I feel we have been singled out here. And my caution is, what is town doing to help solve this problem? My children ask me this question every day. It's been almost a year and a half. I can't go with my temple. I, I feel depressed. I know there are some challenges, some problems, but there's no challenge that we can't sit down and talk about and solve this. I can't speak for management, I'm not here to talk about technical issues, but I'm looking at people and asking them how.
Well, I'll explain it. You, your questions, I thought they were present.
Please, Laura.
Laura, do it. Mary?
Thank you, sir.
I thought at the last meeting we established a pretty good framework in which everybody was gonna come to the table, see heads, or shake, and go. All I'm saying is, I thought at the last meeting we established a plan. Everybody was gonna meet, I'm sure they were meeting, I think they, 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 they. It certainly sounds right, the tenor of the comments I've heard so far explaining that we're making virtually, oh, doesn't sound like we're making any promise. In fact, anything, so that the rather, she's, who, turned up and, uh, looking at the council details of, uh, my, my face, or...
I, I think that we had a case of two steps forward and one step back, perhaps. I think that there were, I had a little bit of a loss because I think it's been stepped out of the room, but hopefully it'll come back while I'm talking.
Um, I think that there were, um, requests made on behalf of the town to the attorneys for the temple. I know one of them was for environmental study. I know some of them were for screening, landscaping, light and sound barriers so that the parking lots would not adversely impact the people that live behind the temple, uh, as well as movement of the parking. So I, I believe all of those requests were, amongst others, conveyed to the attorneys for the temple. Okay, good to see you.
I'll tell you what, do you want, do you want to answer this, or you want to...
Um, he'll stop me if I go too far. I think, I believe that some of those were contemplated and accepted by the temple, and some of them were outright rejected by the temple's attorneys. We were just told, no, under no circumstances are we doing X, Y, Z. Similarly, Stephen, who I think has been doing a very, very natural job of going back and forth in a delicate situation, met with community members, some of whom said, yes, those changes would be acceptable to us, and some of whom said, no, under no circumstances are those changes acceptable to us. So we have made some progress, but in other ways, we haven't made enough progress.
Yeah, I think the last meeting shifted a little to a completely that when we spoke with the temple, the temple was making some changes to the particular plans that we had discussed originally. And then in the interim, as the temple actually made those changes, we made a chance to pull back and speak with them, uh, it was conveyed to me that while they understood some of those changes, they were not willing to, I say not willing to agree at this point, they were, uh, the side of, the side of that side of the, and then this one's not, it's a, so, so I was a little bit at a loss in that I couldn't get back to the town's attorneys who had clearly outlined, uh, and, and how fully they see it, which we're speaking with the group. So at that point, I was holding, how much out of the attorneys that we said?
Uh, any other board members having a...
And Sony, what do you, what do you... What are the obstacles now?
Well, I tell you what, that, that's, that's a little... That's, that's, that's a great question. We'll, we'll answer it. If you have a question, grab it. Oh, wait, I don't need to do this, but are we, are we at a new test?
I almost like to think there's a little bit of hope, I'd like to see what they...
All right, now, now, grab it.
Well, I just want to know, I mean, again, I, I kind of, you know, I'm a little bit honest, but I just want to know, you know, what are the obstacles? I knew they were additionally, uh, parking, whatever, in the 2000s, on Cynthia, uh, it would be perfect for parking, whatever. Those are the obstacles and where are all the results?
Well, again, I think this one's, like, it's in the, uh, table is achieving some transparency issues and issues regarding, um, vibrant studies in that nature.
What does that mean, transparency? I'm, I'm getting confused.
I think that there are questions and concerns about what ultimately will happen with you. I will, we're, we're, I believe Cynthia Lane homes. And there are some questions and concern, and actually, who knows what? And what, and plans are there? And we do, again, I think, I came in a little late, this one's not convention, that some of the earlier plans had shown the demolition of homes to create parking lots. But as Tim pointed out, and those were dated in 2011, and a lot of things that I'm watching happened in situations like this, there'll be conversations back and forth, like, say, hey, what would this look like? How would this be? What would happen after? And sometimes plans are drawn up, but ultimately the ones that were submitted did not have any demolition of any homes. So I think there is concern on the whole court, uh, whole of Hope Cynthia Lane, uh, that they're waiting, that might not stay that long. They are concerned that they may eventually demolish those...
How many homes on Cynthia Lane, the temple?
Well, that's interesting.
Yeah, I, I don't, because I don't know that, that there's, there's two homes are there. I don't, I haven't had a chance to go back, uh, after some of the, I was, some of the things, so there is still a lot of things to flesh out. And I use the phrase, I think that the villagers are very concerned about the gardens. It's a 10-pound marshmallow. I'm trying to take it one by at a time. One of the...
Let me, let me ask you this, uh, because we can't, yet, go there, up here, if it's like the work. The question becomes, should we continue to negotiate at all? Or should everybody just cast their fate to, whether it be the staff board, whether it ultimately be a court of law, whatever's gonna happen here. But let me just ask, and I gotta make it all a simple one here. I'll ask you, Stephen, is there a way to, for this, for the temple, to operate in a manner, as to us, very general, in a, in a, a matter so contained that it will not be impacted on personality and character, use and enjoyment of the property, on hope and Cynthia? Is there a way to do that, or are we looking for a solution that just doesn't exist? Is the temple's position, hey, you know, we own that property, we're gonna build long distance, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that? Or is it, or is it, is it the residents, how did you make that one? You shouldn't have that property, you've got it, you know, some, we can't negotiate, you know, with the great circumstances for us of the foreboding and the fact that that property may, you know, ultimately be used. Is, is everybody, some dug in that someone else has to come in and answer the problem for them? Or, last thing, is there a way, is there a way for the temple to get everything it needs to, or have everything it needs to have, to conduct an orderly congregation without impacting on the volume of life on the surrounding area to the south? Or, is it just what I'm, is it like, is it like a newable object that they're resistant to the force?
At, at this particular time, unfortunately, that's, I'd like to believe that Cynthia's airfire, that they're putting it away, but, uh, I think we're getting as close to that scenario as possible.
Right. Not there yet, but we're...
I'd like to say it's a prior, I'm an eternal optimist, but I think the facts and circumstances are starting to show that we may be getting close.
That most likely, there are certain things that perhaps cannot be, some problems, never wrong that a sign will have.
Yes, sir.
All right. Frank, thank you very much for your time, thank you. I'll let you go back to Lisa, I'll see you.
Cynthia, first of all, um, just to correct Mr. Marx, the plans that we saw with the houses demolished and parked out were dated January 2016. We just pictured those, and those, and they were dated January 2016, with the houses knocked down and a parking lot.
I see you, sir.
With no luck.
I got it.
Right up to the fence line.
I got it.
Um, I don't even know what I want to say.
No, relax, take your time.
Um, we have nothing against the scene people. If they had bought that lot across the street and built their parking lot there, their temple would be open now and we wouldn't be here.
Please, let me ask you that. Uh, I saw that there, I'll, this is my, 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 so... Boy, is that still the case? I know there may be a problem with the town's state, boy, with parking, S B I, I'm scared of a serious accident, that they lost the light, sorry, sorry, so, so maybe it's not doable, but on your side of the pair, so, but then, is that still the case? In other words, if, if the parking issues were removed from Hope and, whatever, if I, and who are transferred to the north, to the park... if I, and who are transferred to the north, parking has a duty of the grant, is that still a sense of community? Or beyond that?
Well, you know what? This opened up a can of worms.
Well, because why didn't you say?
In the beginning, that was the issue. They had, they submitted plans. Their plans were approved based on the letters that Teddy read. They started parking out across the street. If that had been done, their temple would be open now. Everybody would be happy. But once we started looking at the process, we saw that the process was not done properly. There were no variances. There were no traffic studies. There were no environmental studies. And we want to know why. And when we come here and we saw the hearings about the proposed, um, assisted living facility in Woodbury, and they did traffic studies and environmental studies and real estate appraisal studies, and there was a hearing here, why was there no hearing done for this? So it, it opened up a door of why? Why are, why are the town codes not, were not followed for this? Um, speaking just for myself, if I was assured that the parking would be just across the street, personally, I would be fine with that. I don't want to live, and, and nobody should have to live across the street from a parking lot with a view of shop, right? That's not what we bought. It's going to affect our real estate values. Who else wants to live across from a parking lot with a view of shop, right? Um, and I feel, you know, they don't want to go across the street. Maybe we can make it safer. There's a park, there's a traffic light right there already. I know on the major holidays, they have crossing guards. There are other safety concerns that we can address to have that parking across the street. Um, so that we're not staring at parking lots. I don't, I don't think it's fair to have our quality of life.
I don't think listening to very candid, very helpful, by the way.
And I just want to add that it's not personal against them. If it was a church, a temple, a hospital, I don't care what it was. They're buying up homes and threatening our way of life. That's what we have against it. That's all we have against it.
The best evidence of that, I think I say it every meeting. You have been, you know, peacefully coexisted, having good neighbors to each other for thirty years. Anybody who now says, if the temple says, well, they don't like us, or if you say, hey, suddenly the temple turns up, it doesn't work. It's incredibly incredible. Once you have thirty eight history there. So what has that, it comes down to, um, you know, Stephen, I thought you put something different before. Maybe it's a ten pound structure, um, you know, the natural expression is a ten pound structure, a little five pound piece of property. Uh, maybe it's a ten pound structure, maybe only an eight pound. Maybe it has to be cut instead of a ten pound structure, an eight pound structure. And if, you know, if you still bend and stretch and get there, it's better than well controlled or undestined, including the town, that you cast off into the wind. But, um, we'll, we'll see what happens next, but thank you for the interview.
Well, I do want to add, I wasn't there when Mr. Marks came around, um, some Sundays ago. But from what I understand, it was, it was changing storage space, that they would need less parking, which didn't really address, I don't think, any of these left side.
Yeah, the goal was, if only if you open, if the concern was required for parking at this time, you know, the, 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 was to change the message of the spot which could often, could be useful on this, to make that sort of inaccessible to use and store, which physically, you know, people coming in, which physically less the amount.
Well, it keeps talking.
Yes, that's what was designed here.
But that's still in progress, having parking where there are now residential homes.
No, that's, that's, that's not true. No. The idea, that's why, again, I say respectfully, I want to pull it back.
Now regarding the, um, Bill's toning also, I understand Bill's toning has made claims a lot on town hoistering property by the dump or syrup wire. Does the town even have an agreement with them for using the rod? Are they getting paid for that? How much are they getting paid for that? And then also, um, what are, uh, where do things stand with the company that is currently running the Woodlands and the town? Right now, uh, the new company that was created, is, uh, Mrs. Singh still a, uh, an owner of that company and will they be operating concessions? Or who will be operating on the concessions, um, uh, come next month, I guess? And then regarding this, uh, current budget year, 2016, would it be possible, um, in the, in the, uh, spirit of transparency, I guess, um, to be able to show the residents or taxpayers kind of like a running list of budgeted versus actual expenditures throughout the year? So, so we could know at any given time where, uh, where the town is with regard to the budget that was created at the end of last year to where they are now on an ongoing basis? Right, but I said, if you could explain in more detail what that, what that is? This is, um, and it talked, and it also talked about an indirect $2 million guarantee that the town would be liable for. What does that mean, indirect loan guarantee?
I think, I think it previously was discussed in 2011.
This, oh, this was just disclosed? So you don't want to answer it? No, I don't, but, so you don't want to answer it? Alright, um, how about my questions from last week? Uh, how, um, from the last meeting, uh, how much, uh, did, did they, what did the town spend controlling Robert's Facebook page? Did you review all of Robert's Facebook page posts? Controlling? I should say trolling, actually.
Why should you say trolling?
That's more accurate.
Oh, he's talking about the two, the two fellows have a, um... You see, let me guess, before you do that, I'm finding that I understand that. If you don't understand, I need to prevent yourself, so I didn't want to... A resident comes to the town board and asks a question, okay? We give an answer. If we don't give a, say it, don't give it, you're gonna say it. A resident comes to town board and asks a question, you talk to them, provide an answer. We provide the answer. The resident, as if he's happy to have the answer, may not like the answer, and may have other reasons. A resident comes to the town board and we don't provide an answer, then the resident starts screaming, "You're always like, I've asked a question, you're always like, question." In this case, Mr. Rip has posed numerous questions as you have, since you asked the town board, and we endeavor to ask them. There is, there is a cost attendant for all of these asking. We need a fine answer, you know? We have to decrease them. You know, sit, you know, focus on these issues for a long period of time, like you might or another resident might, maybe talking about, um, you know? So we have to go back, we have to do research, and provide an answer. We do that, and then you say, "Oh, how much did it cost to get me that answer?" Now, if we don't answer, you can be saying, "Well, we don't need information." If we did give you an answer, you're upset, you must be spending money to get it, it's a self, we're a little bit sharp fish. Um, so, um, um, now you start, you're talking about controlling a Facebook page, that's not what happened. All these questions that Mr. Elspeth responded to were presented to us at his podium, so we endeavor to get an answer. When we don't get an answer, you complain, and when we get an answer, further complain that, "Well, I didn't spend any time answering my question." No, I don't like to speak, but that's why I see, you know?
No, okay, ladies and gentlemen. My question was how much did it cost the town? And basically, you spent thirty-five minutes up here telling, uh, saying that they were against Facebook policy and, um, reading posts from Facebook, all Facebook posts. So my question was, how much did that cost the town? You said you spent the entire week working on it.
No, you see, here we go again, I never said you spent the entire, I said that you spent the past week working on it. It's not the only thing we did all week.
Well, how much did it cost?
Well, that's, I, I don't know how many hours it...
Last meeting, you said you'd have the cost for me at this meeting?
No, we, so we, we only have them yet, but we endeavor to get your time, and we know again, that was what it was, we're trying to get your time.
Figuring out how much time I've spent. They asked that Mr. Rip stood at that moment and asked...
I, I have rights to know how much it cost.
A hundred hours?
No, it was, well, it was, it was, it was, uh, compressed within a week, not within a year.
Okay, so at the next meeting, could you have the, the example...
I, I don't know, we can put it together.
I'm gonna have to tell you, I, uh, don't have specific prayers identified, which is a, no more events.
Oh, you don't just like things that have, uh, say you approximate it? Alright, so sit down, with whatever reference you have, you have it, while going through it ahead in front of the crowd, say, "At least how much did I spend?"
Okay, and then, um, I think it was, probably you had said, uh, you, you had had the number from December for the manual, but you said you would get it for...
For the, for the portion of this year, I'm sorry, but I'm not gonna look, but I don't have it, but you get, get it, but now please...
I think we're already at a time, are we okay at a time? Okay. Uh, of course, we want, we have any outstanding questions, you know what's left in the little room?
Uh, no, the rest can wait for the next meeting.
Alright, let's go to back, ask him before you go.
Alright, thank you.
Do me a favor in the future, if you don't want to address more taxpayer funds, then get any answers to your questions, something like that, because believe it, we haven't got to do it. Alright, um...
You're funny.
What's that?
I said you're funny.
Okay, that was sweet. Ernie, Ernie, uh, yeah.
Yes, can I just speak to the seat temple? A very good morning afternoon to the council members and the members present. My name is Urmith Kaur, a name which is easy to spell and pronounced by the way I present it to you all in this room. Let's break up the name, the first two letters, that is, you are, uh, is a shortcut in the texting world as your, and the, the rest four letters, that is, meet, is in Punjabi means friends. Thus, my name says it all, Urmith, your friend. Thus today I stand in each and everybody, in, that I stand in front of each and every member and speak to you all as a friend, who will speak our heart out as a friend would do so. We've come here over, we've come over here again and again to request you grant permission to construct and let us return to our homes, the Gurudwara, a, a house or a home to all that appear here. Time and time, we are pleading you all to let us return to our home. About citizens' pillars, Sikhs have three pillars, Kirat Karo, that is work honestly, Vant Chakro, that is to serve and share humanity, Nam Chakro, that is to meditate, and today, and today's citizen's pillar is moved, this, uh, sorry, a little nervous. And today's citizens', one pillar is moved, that is Nam Chakro, to meditate. We as kids were taught to do Nam Chakro, that is to meditate in Sangha, that is in a group. When one pillar is moved, the roof will collapse, and the member under this roof will be wounded, and it is, and it feels like we have been wounded now. Sikhs, one major belief is sharing and giving back to the community. Today's companies, organizations have been started to give back to the society in the name of corporate social responsibility, that is CRS, CSR, that citizens have been giving back to the society from the day we were born. We have been taught to share and serve our society from our childhood. Wherever the Sikhs are present in the world, we have been and recognized as people who will share and serve, then how can we hurt our neighbors on purpose? Let's for once ask ourselves, for what are these Sikhs coming here for? Are we asking you for a commercial hangout place? Or are we a big shank store that will destroy our small mompous and the neighborhood? If not, then why did this project, the Gurudwara, our home to all? When a homeless man wanders, we pity or we are scared of him. Today, we are homeless and wounded. Therefore, we are wandering around, who has thrown us out of our home? The project is stopped for parking. I ask, I ask humbly the town hall members, would they consider to close their offices down, since they don't have enough parking space available on the municipal parking lot for all the members present in this room? But that's not the case, instead, the town of Oyster Bay has made special provision for parking, that is to let people know where to park and not, by putting up signs which indicate where to park and for how long. And the businesses around the town hall have signs that say, "No parking except for their clients or business associates only." Can't this idea or provision be made for us? And I'm sure we are all a law-abiding citizens, and we would follow it. So, sir and ma'am, I come from India, I have been educated in a convent school, wherein I was taught by my principal, who was a nun from Australia. She said, "Love begets love." Does I stand before you, or to open your minds and your hearts and accept and love us the way we have loved our society and the way we have served and supported our society? My mom taught me, the very first discipline of life, that charity begins at home, and she said, she, and she did mention, not only your family but blood, but human race as a whole is your family, and you should serve it. Thus, we Sikhs, we do our very best to serve our society as a whole. A few points I put on your table to make you, make it simpler for you all to analyze our pain and help resolve this project, the Gurudwara, our home to all. We are expanding at the same pace, at our very existence with more land. I do agree, when a neighbor is adding an extension to its living premises to accumulate and give more space to its members in the same house. We, as members, do get irritated or frustrated at times due to the noise created by the construction or due to the flow of construction workers or their vehicles, et cetera. But we live with it, and then, and we let them continue and complete the project, project, as they have the permits and license from the town to do so. As I just said, every dark cloud has a silver lining. The construction period is a dark cloud, but a new construction adds value to the neighborhood. Do we believe that God's home will harm us or our surroundings? Or will it raise a, a value by creating a positive aura? We need to keep our minds open and to see the best that will arise. One thought for each individual to realize our pain, when a family, when we have a big family, but we eat alone on the table, and the entire family is absent, when a priest has to pray alone, his family cannot come to the church, when one prepares food for their family and the family cannot make it. Do we realize, do we realize what does one's heart say or feel? These are the feelings of each individual Sikh who have been deprived of their home. Our priest is our teacher, who guides and educates us to the teachings of our guru, and thus each Sikh is missing something within them. The priest recites alone, prepares food alone, he eats alone. Who and why are we hurting these poor souls who are so close to God? We are humans, we get upset nowadays, we like it, but few good words of appreciation or good deed makes us happy again. And for me, when Shabbos, that are hymns, recited and explained from the Kuru Bran Sahib, that's our holy Bible, with Sangha, that is my family, gets me started and lets me stay at my very destitute, do my good deeds, while gives someone goodness. As a kid, I was told that one bad deed of mine will be accounted for three D minutes on my soul, and I will have to earn a star by doing three good deeds to make one bad deed I did. Maybe this was just told to me to keep me away from doing something wrong to others and myself today. Can one measure this deed of not letting each individual Sikh not practice their belief in religion? Thus, Urmith, thus I, Urmith, your friend, request you all to make this project, the Gurudwara, our home to all. Your utmost priority, and let the family return back to their home. We aren't here to hurt anybody, but instead, we are, we've been in here, and you, all as good doctors, need to cure us. Thank you, I'm sorry if I've hurt anybody's feelings, but I would, but this would, but this would be how a friend would cry out its deepest pain. Let us return to our home, the Gurudwara, our home to all.
Thank you.
Very good. Doctor, say it.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, good afternoon, councilman. I guess, uh, my name is Ashish Singh. I've been doing it since ninety-eight, and pretty much my sister said everything what I have to say, and I really humble request to all of you, please, uh, have our temple open for prayer, and everybody's welcome. Sikh is not for, temple is not for only Sikh people. Welcome everyone, end of the day, we all, nor the children, doesn't know where I'm brown, you're white, you're black, doesn't know, skin doesn't know anything, end of the day, we all, we all have the same soul, and we are loving, caring, and sharing people. And I ask for, uh, help, and please, let's open the temple, and do prayer, and I, I moved, I moved from Brooklyn in ninety, I'm businessman, I own chain stores, I'm Nike dealer, North Queens, I, you know, that's why I said, I took my chain stores all in Brooklyn, the Queens. I moved to ninety-eight to play with you, to raise my children, to better their livelihood. Now, my son, my older one is in college, he's about to graduate, another one about to go to college. And I, I take my children to temple every single day, and show them, teach them principles and values which given by a guru, and from, they always learn something from there. Now, they ask me, "Daddy, you know, what's going on?" Every time we drive by, temple is closed for the last couple of, couple of years already. And, you know, we all make mistakes, and we're willing to work, if we made any mistakes, we're willing to work with the, with town, town board, and this is my humble request, let's get this open, and that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for everyone, everyone inside, I love you all. Thank you.
I'm gonna take a very, very, very brief recess, and three more speakers, we'll get literally five minutes of that. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, if anyone would like to see, we will continue, and we will continue with Barbara Eaton, Barbara.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Uh, my name is Barbara Eaton, and today I'm here representing the Hicksville Gardens Civic Association. I'm not seeking any kind of answer, uh, I've been asked by the people of, of the organization to bring something up to you, to make sure that you know it's not a new topic, it's an old one, but it's my obligation to let you know that it's a, a big concern of our people, and it pertains to a, something that was a news day last Thursday, town contracts exceed budget, I have a copy here just in case you want. Um, and basically, it just addresses two things. Of course, that a budget has exceeded, which is, I can understand, that doesn't need to happen, this is, of course, a big major concern for everybody, but also how contracts and who they are granted to. Uh, there was a lot of chatter, a lot of concern, I was asked to bring it up today, I'm doing that, again, as I said, this is a big topic, and it's not something that I can ask for an answer to.
Tell me, you don't have to justify why you're, what you're, you can just, just fire away with it?
No, that's it, so I just wanted to say, it's my obligation to let you know that this is a big concern, that people are talking about this when they read this in Newsday, uh, and therefore, I don't know, there are always a lot of questions about how, has something gone out to RFP, the contracts and everything else. So, it's important, and because things like this are published, and perhaps maybe proactively the word, it's a big, big job, but I think perhaps proactively we go out, it would play against some of those people that have these concerns and these concerns.
What if we gave you a statement, state back to your organization, would that be helpful?
That would be great.
Okay, have that ready for you, in short order. I actually, before you go, unless you're in a rush, I want to, and you're right, this requires someone to sit down and carefully think it through and give you the right answer. But just, I, I, I seem to remember in the article, um, I was a little bit concerned about whether or not we actually did have, whether it really was an over expenditure, because that, that, that was never my understanding, am I wrong?
How, how, who, who, who?
It's the, it's the article on cash and spindel, uh, regarding, um, that we won $120,000 on the budget last year because extraordinary circumstances. But again, I, I, I'm wondering, maybe the best thing to do is, there are a lot of like to go out here and prepare, but, but Bonnie's being very, very reasonable about this, and what she's saying is, you guys, let's hear from her, uh, and what is her response to this? We can prepare a formal response and give it to her and anybody else in the world and whatnot. I guess probably a better way...
I, I think, very good issue to raise, there is for better or for worse, uh, I wasn't kind of our conclusions, it's not, I don't think, it's, as media outlets multiplying the form of media, with a lot of information, and you may think, well, there is a percentage of that, it's really misinformation. So, I think it is a good idea, if you can count, without, you want, going third parties or appropriate, uh, sect, uh, comes out with some statements into how these things develop. Because from my observation, in the vast majority of cases, when things are explained to people, but most times when people explain it to people, they don't think, "Oh, I knew I did that, or I felt that, or if I don't have, I don't answer many, I don't have all the questions I had." So I can go, who this, if you like, supervisor, when there's great... So I can go, who this, if you like supervisor, wouldn't it great to do that as an overall?
No, what I'd like you to do, I think Barbara presents us with a very interesting opportunity, especially since, obviously, people in your neck of the woods, and perhaps other necks of the woods, who haven't come forward and helped us, are disturbed by this. So at least in places where things, I want to say, it jumps, you know, they rush together. But when you're doing something like this, you tend to travel around, you know, while we have a responsibility in this, I don't like some of the things I'm reading, so maybe it's time that we did a proper response, so that Barbara can take it back. What did you root next meeting?
Uh, I believe it up.
That's perfect. And I think, I'll allow it to be viewed to open up the license communication. And I like, what I'd like is a formal written response, retouting, you know, some things that you obviously know are not correct. I will say one thing, Barbara, it makes it feel any better, this is not a formal party response. So this issue comes up time, and I can get you right, it's not a religion. There is no such thing as a no bid contract. There's no such thing. I think people sometimes say, well, what do you mean supervisor? You don't bid every contract, you have RFPs. Yes, there are two ways contracts are coming to be, that are awarded, through a, depending on both, I'll prescribe by law, depending on which contract. One is by a straight bid. You and I both bid, you bid a dollar, I bid $2, I win because I bid $2. If you bid $3, I bid $2, you win again. Straight. Under contracts for professional services and under areas of, by by law, require you to do differently. They don't, price is only a factor, they don't limit you. So this again comes from state legislature through the general business of laws. They don't limit you just to wanting, you know, price. For example, heaven forbid, I mean, I'll use myself as an example, heaven forbid I ever made a, ah, it said that it is in the end, so, um, so with professional services, price is a factor, but other factors that are included, including prior experience, expertise, competency, and history and so on. There is no, I'm sorry, there is no contract that is awarded, except by those two methods. It does that.
And what's interesting is, this is great that we're hearing this here in this forum, but perhaps this is something that needs to be communicated and able. Another thing is, like, we opened up this meeting today, we addressed the article that I read that page far. That was great, because that was probably on many of our minds. I know that my husband brought it up yesterday, I read it yesterday, it was all gold and everything else. But the fact that you can say, listen, we don't have the information, we will find the information of you, means so much, and it really defers, and everybody's like craziness about decisions. So, thank you, I appreciate that very, very much.
I don't mean you to do a press for the fight, have you come back?
Absolutely.
You do that privately, and within two weeks you'll have a statement, I'll have a copy of it, and you and Hal, you and Hal Mayer will talk. I might even want a chat if you do it with him. I think what you've done is something very constructive, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara. CJ Ar- Ar- Ardeja?
Oh.
That's, I'm trying to, I'm trying to.
Thanks for having me the time. I'm a Sikh, I belong to Sikh Catholic and Baptist, and I've been working with them for 30 years. And every day I still go to the temple. I believe that we do need our temple open as soon as possible. As far as transparency is concerned, we are willing to do whatever is required under the law, whether it's parking, whether it's construction, or whether it is landscaping. We are law-abiding citizens, and we want to fulfill our neighbors. We don't want in any shape or form diminish their property values. But building a temple, we believe we are enhancing the value of their property, because the temple that was in existence for over 100 years was in channels. And that's why, as the congregation took upon themselves, contributed 5, 10, 50, $20 each, and collected funds so that we can enhance that building, in the form that it is now. And when we drive faster, and so do a lot of other baby residents, it's an eyesore. And it should not be in that format right now. We need to all sit together, work on this, whatever is required, be that we with the neighbors, or with the planning board, or with the town council. And let's come to some sort of a compromise, so that we can have an expeditious way of proceeding forward, and so that all our kids will be deprived, literally deprived, our families will be deprived of our religious ceremonies on a weekly basis. We need, we need to, I very request you all to, let's put our efforts together, and we as Sikh community are willing to, like I said, make all our effort, whatever is required, under the law, under the rules and regulations of the town, and let's kindly proceed forward. That would be my earnest request to you all, and thanks very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Richard Brummel.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Okay, my name is Richard Brummel, and I'm a resident of Hicksville, but I've been studying a lot of time over the past year in Worcester Bay. I have a petition I'd like to submit to you from mostly Worcester Bay citizens. These are petitions, these signatures support the proposition, quote, "We oppose the destruction of any forests in the former Plainview Office Complex in Plainfield, Bethpage, for athletic fields or any other reason." We call on the town of Worcester Bay Board to preserve all the land under its control in this area, for the sake of the environment and the community. And this I collected at the, at the Bethpage Bike Way this past Saturday and Sunday, over the course of about six hours. And I have dozens of signatures, about 82 in total, people coming from as far away as Midiola, East Williston, Roslyn, Huntington, and Smithtown, but mostly people from all Bethpage, Siocet, and Plainview, and Bethpage. So I'll submit that to you with a cover letter, please. The cover letter is from me, which describes the issues involved, and the circumstances of this petition. I'd like to note that Earth Day is coming up, April 22nd. The Pope has been in the news almost constantly, speaking about not only equality, but also protecting the environment.
I'm sorry, I'm, 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 I'm.
Pope Francis. He is, I also note that Theodore Roosevelt, kind of the patron politician of this community, Worcester Bay, is, was a very, very strong conservationist and environmentalist. I would note to you that yesterday I discovered that, this is all with respect to Country Point Plainview, which we all know is a 150-acre project at the former Nassau County Office Complex, on Old Country Road, between Old Country Road and Round Swamp Road in Plainview, Bethpage. Yesterday I discovered, and I don't believe it's been publicized anywhere, that construction vehicles, heavy equipment, land clearing vehicles, forest destroying vehicles are now parked in the Higginham address headquarters. And this morning, some workmen were out putting up plastic along Old Country Road in preparation for destroying those forests. They use the term clearing, because a forest is an extraordinary living organism, that's an extremely valuable component of our environment, as the Pope and Earth Day and Theodore Roosevelt well aware. As you know, the plan that you approved last May does call for destroying approximately 60 acres of forest. The environmental review was very vague on exactly how this was going to work, but approximately 60 acres of forest in that office complex, is a pristine acres of forest in addition to the trees that will be destroyed around the old hospital facilities. So that process is getting underway, and it's a real tragedy. You have 15 acres that were deeded to you at Newtown Road, I'm sorry, at East Bethpage Road, or Old Country Road. That acreage has been in dispute, whether it's dedicated to be destroyed for athletic fields, as the covenant that you passed provides for, specifically provides for leveling that property in order to create athletic fields, and the site plan also does that. But yet you have, under your authority, the choice not to level that for athletic fields, for soccer fields, and that's what this petition is about. And that's what I would hope that you reconsider. You also committed on the record that there would be 15 acres. As I say, these numbers are vague, because they were never pinned down in the environmental review that you approved last May. But, so I would urge you to use your discretion at this point. The people that now sign this petition, that's one person, myself going out in one place for six hours on one, on a couple of afternoons. They represent a very small cross-section, a very small representative sample of what you would find if you literally took a survey, an opinion survey, calling out people or whatever. But in addition to that, your discretion to preserve this, just because it's the important thing to do, taking into account what the Pope has said about our planet, our common home, which is so stressed, and so destroyed, and so overdeveloped. That's something that it behooves you to consider strongly. And as I say, I wrote them, knowing exactly when the environmental review will happen, when you're here, it's going to happen about 15 acres. Because that was clearly specified in your finding statement from May 2015. My letter to you is quite extensive and I hope self-explanatory, basically just stands on those ideas. I would, I would request, I do have a couple, it's been a fascinating time to sit and listen to the conversations that you have with our citizens. Every town is different, I live in the town of North Emstate, and very impressive the way that your citizens have raised some issues. I'd like to just touch, as an active environmentalist, I would say one thing, where these trees, these several hundred-year-old trees were taken down, and the answer was, the code prevents it. I mean, that invites the additional question, is there something wrong with our code? Can we make a code that does not permit? And that really is the question that was raised by this citizen.
Well, this is a great question, that, and the rights of property owners as well, I think that could be difficult.
You're absolutely right, supervisor Eaton, and as we all know, the reason that we went through an environmental review for Plain, for Country Point Plainview is because the rights of the property owner are subsumed by the laws of the state, by the rules expected by the, by the goals of the state. As you know, SEACRO that specifies, and I'm sure if you go through the code of the town of Worcester Bay, there are many places, I'm sure, where it says, you have a tree code. And that tree code is actually coded by the citizens, and staff, I remember, and they said how important the trees are, how valuable the trees are, what an important function they have. So yes, we are property rights, but they're always subsumed. All of our individual rights have to fit in the greater good, and that's, and that's really something that, we really have to reconsider that too. And to just say the property rights is an answer, is a very unfortunate.
No, I didn't say that was an answer, I said that was another issue that is prevalent, that is not an answer. I think it's blending together of all the concerns that we express in the style of, you know, like, that, that needs to be taken from the mindset, and come from a good, good decision of law and good justification. I think, for example, I'm, I'm, you know, we've never met before, of course, as I was speaking, I realized that you've been able to get to us for a wide extent, period of time, and multiple.
Multiple, what?
Multiple venues.
Proceeding, that is what happened.
With all kinds of meritaries.
No, that's pretty accurate, I do like that.
We may not agree, I can still respect.
But actually, yeah.
Now, like you say, you go to three, all those things, I am going to take seriously the petition that you handed out, I understand in the background, and I got it, who pressed upon us that, you know, from your perspective, it's a relative, small sample. Sample is a great number of people are concerned. So I'm going to, I'm going to make a plan to do that, but I do have to match it up against what has, what history is here. We did have a hearing, the residents came off this vote for and against, I think, for, to fit up here.
I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, yeah, I didn't talk about that, so I mean, it's really want to reopen that.
I have to hear, that's what I'm saying to you, we can discuss that in another time, for actually, we're all, so we got a public hearing, where residents vote for and against.
Yeah, okay. But you may be aware, and we did put in the lawsuit, that your citizens who live down at Round Swamp Road, made a specific analysis of that, of that hearing, in which they, they listed, who's permitted to speak at what time. And we have to remember that there was a hearing held on a weeknight, you know, in a dead winter, a school night, that went on to 3 o'clock, and basically people were told, if you don't stick around, you're out of luck, you're tough luck, if you want to be, if you want to speak. And so in that, in that sense, the proper, the proper thing to do, if I may, would have been at 11 o'clock to say, you know, this is tremendous, we have a lot more people here than we expected, we're going to adjourn this, have another hearing in a week from now, that begins at a reasonable hour, ends at a reasonable. So that, that hearing was, in some ways, in some ways, that was dirty, you could hear.
I'm going to let you know, I was in the middle of a sentence, you were really in trouble.
I apologize for that.
Thank you. Richard, can I add something? I was going to say, you've received letters, you've seen this, you've been able to process.
That is exactly what I was going to say, we have received multiple correspondence from people on both sides of the issue for months, and weeks before and after the hearing, and individually. I certainly, I'm sure my colleagues did as well, comments, civic groups that had individual meetings with residents, I'm sorry.
Many, many meetings here, absolutely, many residents come up to us, you know, the comments, hearing, discuss, you know, that, that project, many, many meetings.
Richard, let me just say this, and that, we let them tell us that, because we don't wait all the time. I understand if you want to hear from me, take very seriously the petition that you submitted. I'm going to match it up against disparate record in the Country Point matter. The only thing I would, I would say to you this, and you.
Except for what I said.
Well, I don't know, Peter, we're authors, the residents have written articles in the petition, which the great court has helped them. That Article 78 petition was fully briefed and decided on the ballot by Justice Peck in roughly December of 2012. Justice Peck found the discount board's determination with respect to the Country Point project was in all respect, not for, and not all the shows, and not the church. So I think to be completely correct, it should be stated, and it should be, should be brought out, that Mr. Brummel does have his criticisms, he's made that very clear. I don't think the discount board expressed his opinion by his vote, but that opinion and that determination was subject to judicial review by Justice Peck. And then in attempt to bring that to the appellate division, and the appellate division passed on the argument presented by Mr. Brummel. And it should be also noted that Mr. Brummel was enjoined by Justice Peck for further application on this top act, he's enjoined for restraint, because it has been marked at any number of points many times, and if there is anything that litigation seeks to bring, it's now.
Okay, Richard, in addition to some of the stuff that was being used before.
I might, you know, you, your board is very much more generous with its time, sometimes, I can go a full extra. Very much more generous with its time than any other institution that I've ever seen before in a lot.
And so, say something, David.
I don't want to be disrespectful, but I would, I would appreciate if you would.
You could have not been.
Thank you, okay. But I would appreciate if you would clarify, and this is an important issue. You were quoted in the Herald, the Plainview Worcester Herald, as stating that the environmental review upon which this board based its decision on Country Point Plainview was not adequate.
I remember, I remember that quote, and I think, I don't recall the problem with it, but it was, as, 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 that was a, that was a, it was not unfortunate, it was not what I said, somehow, I guess.
And so, by that issue also was brought to the court's attention before the client's magnetic adjuster, who suspected it, I believe the issue was a selective voting, a mislocation of some variation of that, of that whole.
I believe that's completely inaccurate, the court never ruled that, because the statement was, it didn't come out until a while after, but I was just wondering if it was true.
Barbara Eaton says it very thoroughly, it was a, I just don't know, it was a very important thing to be doing. You can't. Well, we don't believe that, it just seemed to me, hearing itself, that's what, we don't believe that, I don't believe that, I don't believe that, always tested, always.
That's what I'm asking you.
So can I just put, I did to do that?
So you're saying that quote is completely untrue?
I'm saying that.
It's untrue.
Yeah, I'm saying that the road is, we all get it, it was well directed, directed in part, paid for, but I never, ever said, or never, ever felt before, that the process was. And I know what I'll say, step further, if I didn't, I misspoke. I mean, I'm a bean, I, you may find it hard to believe, the town supervisor makes sense. I actually, I think I may go back to the 50s. You know, seriously, I probably made a mistake in reality, but I do the best I can with my limited resources I have, and I think that's true of the, I don't believe, I don't believe I misspoke, but if I did, I misspoke.
Okay.
I don't recall I misspoke, so we contacted now, forever.
Okay, so one more thing, Mr. Rose, who's an extremely aggressive litigator, you know, you've got, you've kept getting what he's worth. The appellate division never did rule on the merits of the.